Okay, thank you. We'll pull our meeting. I'll try it again. We'll bring our meeting to order here on Tuesday, October 1st. Planning Board Agenda. Our first item is informal hearing for a new application. This is Gupta. Application for a subdivision amendment for lot line amendment, 7 County Lane. Good evening.
Good evening. J.B. Hernandez, Architect for the Project. This is a, hopefully, a simple project we're trying here. It's 7 County Lane and 127 Somers Town Road. There will be transferring point two-two of an acre from one property to the other. So basically, there is an irregular shaped lot.
Squaring off of the lot.
The square of the lot. We did receive comments from engineering and planning. And we'll be addressing those about the tables and calculations. There's no structural proposed, and this is very straightforward.
Right, right.
And I think one of the owners is here. And if need to be any questions, the board has.
Okay, very good. Sabrina, you have some comments?
Yeah, and as the architect has indicated, there is no new construction proposed as part of the project. Because there is no new construction, a lot line change is considered a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There was some request to make some changes to the zoning conformance table, which he mentioned, which he agreed to do. There are steep slopes and wetlands present on the property, but as there's no construction, it's just a lot line change. One of the missing elements is the coverage information for the lot. Right now, in the zoning conformance table, it refers to percentages. We actually need actual numbers. And there does seem to be a lot of impervious surface on the subject parcel. So we'll really need to get a better understanding of the quantity and whether or not we'd be looking at a variance for the coverage or not. And then, there's a couple of add the, like, section block and lot number to the plans, complete the application materials. And I think that's about it. Other than that, it's a simple lot line change.
Right, right.
Just try to determine that everything is in compliance.
Good, good. Bob, you had some comments and some issues about some coverage over the seven areas?
Yes, evidently, based on what I saw and what they submitted, they put a walkway and patio, and they constructed, I mean, over the entire on-site wastewater treatment system, including the primary and the expansion area. I submitted a little sketch, just for informational purposes, to show where the walkway is relative to the two areas. And also, two, I don't know exactly, but I roughly have about 1,025 square feet, which may trip the wires for stormwater, if that's the case. So I recommend that they give me better numbers on that than I'm likely to give them. And also, two, I'm concerned about the construction activities and any equipment that was over the expansion area and primary. So I'm going to recommend that they show all of that on the plat. That has to be approved by the county, because I am sure they might be a little bit concerned about that.
Okay.
So you might want to show that on there. And if they sign off on it, then we know they're good with it.
Right.
He's a truly, really good authority.
What's the nature of the patio? Is it concrete, asphalt? Is it?
It's gravel with a step and stone on it. I mean, there's.
Slate stones in between?
Yeah.
But that's still what county is encouraged?
Well, you know, I'm not the approving authority, but in speaking to county officials, the only thing that they like to see over primary and expansion areas is basically maximum, two or three inches of topsoil. And C, other than that, anything should go through them. Or you need engineers to simplify that the expansion area. More importantly, the absorption fields have not been impacted. B, sometimes they can be impacted, and it will reduce the functionality and longevity of the field.
Yep.
So we will, that will have to go through the county, all department, to make sure that?
Yes, we'll show it on there. And they have to be aware of that. And if they sign off on the plat, that would be sufficient.
So is that something that they have to get approval from the county now before we look at it? Or is it something, once we do the plat, we send it out to the county for their impermeator?
Yeah, it is. It's a matter of the two.
Okay.
Okay.
So it won't hold you up with what we do?
Right, okay.
No, it would not.
Okay.
And B, that was there, and over B, just obviously show the total impervious, because when I did the inspection on this, when they built it many, many years ago, obviously, that was not there. And this was, the seal was given in 2010. The stormwater regulations came in April of 2007. So the planning board, in light of the fact that it might not be over 1,000 square feet, can tell, indicate that they have to provide stormwater for it anyway, if the county lets that remain.
Okay.
Okay.
And two, submit a subdivision plat for review. You can pull up the court, now, of course, they have a whole set of guidelines of items that have to be on there. And submit that for further review. Sign it sealed by a PLS, obviously, and those are my comments.
Very good. Any issues at all? Anything confusing or something?
No, I mean, we may approach, I mean, I think it may be better to approach the county to make sure that there's no issues with them before we do the plat.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we will.
Good idea.
So Sabrina wrote a memo that if we were able to get things to us by October 14th, we could schedule for a public hearing on November 6th. We have to go to a public hearing.
Right, okay.
But if it's, you can't make that cutoff, let us know, and we'll do the next one, which is November, what, 20, 19, or something like that?
Ah, November 19.
19.
Okay.
So we'll give it to you in your hands.
We can tell you it's scheduled for November 6th for a public hearing.
Okay.
So we would need to receive it by the 14th in order to do our public notices and whatnot.
Okay.
Do we have sufficient information to direct staff to draw up a resolution? Or you want to wait?
I think we need to wait until he makes the submission, because we really need to solve that coverage and determine whether or not additional town actions are needed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. You have a question? Sure.
The transfer property to bring the lot into conformance, is that because work is going to be done in the future?
No.
Or this is just for cleaning up some paperwork?
This is, it was more for, if you look at the, what they have, the backyard is awfully close here, so they're looking to square themselves, so they have more.
Get some more backyard.
Yes.
Okay. Just curious. Well, it's, you can come up and speak if you like.
If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and your.
So my name is Emma Riesley. I live at 127 Somers Town Road. So the Guptas got a variance to put their house quite close to the property line. And then, once they moved in, they had a problem with us walking in their sightline, with, particularly with our dogs. And they were uncomfortable with that. So we, this seemed to be the best solution. And they also had a misunderstanding from the original drawing. They actually thought their property line continued in a straight line.
Straight on.
Okay. So we said, if you want it, that's fine. But it's a lot of work. But that's, that was the situation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you soon.
All right.
Okay, very good. We move now to our next item, and this is the, an informal hearing for the bargue application. This is an application on appeal for a wetlands permit, 931 Hart Scrabble Rock, Hart Scrabble
Good evening. Steven Silverberg, Silverberg Zolantis. I'm the attorney for the applicant. With me is Renee Byers, who's the landscape architect. Since this is an appeal of the ERB decision, I'd just like to go over a couple of legal issues, and then I'll turn over Ms. Byers to go through the plan with you, if I may. So I think our letter of September 5th actually lays out what we view as the issues in this case. I'm not going to repeat everything. I just want to highlight a couple of things. In addition, yesterday, we received a memorandum from your environmental coordinator, which we haven't had a chance to really review and address. Among other things, yesterday was a holiday, and neither my client nor I were able to look at it until today. What we would intend to do, since we understand that this would be scheduled for a public hearing at some point, is we would submit something in writing prior to that hearing so that you could have an opportunity to review our response to that memorandum, because we do think there are a few things in there that are not accurate. Essentially, this is a issue of the ERB's decision being proper or not. And obviously, you have the right to make your own findings after you review the evidence. As we pointed out in our letter, the ERB decision really wasn't even a decision. There were no findings, and typically, you're required by law to make findings when you, when you issue a decision. Here, there wasn't even a vote to deny the application. Actually, what they did is they voted to approve the application. That did not pass, and then they just said, "You're denied." And that, and that's reflected in the minutes, in fact, of, of the last hearing before the ERB. So we believe it's defective just from that standpoint. In addition, in both the hearings that we had, the chair made a point of stressing that the ERB viewed pools as a different category from homes and sheds, and even above-ground pools. Yet there's nothing in your code that makes that distinction. What the code talks about is mitigating flooding and runoff. And we, in fact, did significant amount of work in addressing that issue. In fact, the, based upon a site visit by the ERB, we modified the plan, reduced the amount of encroachment into the buffer. And as a result of that, there's 117 square feet of the actual pool that encroaches into the buffer area. There's a total of 389 square feet of hardscape into the buffer, which includes 272 square feet, excuse me, of garden walls, pool steps, and part of the pool wall. Significantly, when they visited the site, ERB members indicated that they had no problem with, with things like walls and so forth in the, in the buffer area. Their concern was the actual area of the pool that held water. And as a result of that, that, we made those modifications to reduce the amount of pool area. At one point, they suggested that we do a triangular pool, and it ju, it just doesn't work. So we proposed 6,290 square feet of mitigation plantings, which is a 16-to-1 ratio of the hardscape, including all of the hardscape areas in the buffer. And actually, if you just look at the 117 square feet of encroachment of the pool area into the buffer area, and you compare that to the mitigation measures, it's actually a 58-to-1 ratio, which is significantly more, both in actual mitigation area and in ratio, than the ERB has approved in any number of occasions for other types of construction. But again, they separated out, and they talked about pools. The ERB is legally bound to observe its administrative precedent, so when it approved other encroachments that were greater encroachment with less mitigation than we proposed, that's a precedent that they should follow. When we come along and we have less mitigation and greater, I'm sorry, we have more mitigation and less encroachment, the revised plans are a compromise to try to address the concerns of the board. And again, I'll turn this over now to Ms. Byers, who can explain to you exactly what we did.
Okay, great.
Can you have it electronically, your submission?
Yes. Hi, I'm Renee. Yes, that was already submitted, and Heather went over it in detail with someone named Felicia with your office, so you already have that.
Right, but your presentation boards are supposed to.
They're all in, they're all on that hard copy.
We require you to bring the electronic version to show on.
So we can see it here.
Yeah, we, we don't, that, the, the copy that you submit with your application is uploaded onto the website.
So that was never explained, that we needed to have it for tonight only? We thought that you, what we submitted was what you needed.
Not only, but in addition to.
Yeah. I'd like, did you have a document? Maybe I didn't have it. I'm sorry, I just, we did not.
It's okay. Next time, if you could bring electronic versions of your work.
I could send it to you tomorrow, if you'd like.
The utility of it is for this evening, so you could show it on the screen.
So you want a thumb drive or a DVD?
A thumb drive.
Yeah, and one of the reasons is that, since we're televised, a lot of people watch what's going on at home.
Right.
And so the boards are much harder to see.
I can understand the reasoning. I just didn't, like, the gentleman ahead of us just had a draw, like, I didn't realize that everyone did that.
Yeah, it's especially important for the public hearing, Sarah.
We were in the impression that, since we submitted a thumb drive, that would be.
I thought that there was just some miscommunication between, since, no one said two thumb drives.
Right, right.
One for then, one for now, so, pardon me.
Not of just the plans.
Okay.
Well, it's, that's a file within, and so I didn't even understand that, that.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So we'll know it for next time.
Okay.
Probably aren't that many people watching, but.
Okay.
This is pretty exciting.
It's not for lack of quantity. So I, I apologize, you have so many documents. We tried very hard, because we thought long and hard about this, and we really tried to be very thorough from the beginning. I never envisioned that we'd be to this point, so I'm going to do my best. I don't want to take up a lot of time, so I'll go kind of quickly, and I'm happy to go back. I just don't want to have everybody.
Um, before you say that, Jennifer, for us, would be appropriate, you know, this is sort of a matter of first impression for us, where we have taken an appeal. And your memo indicated that, basically, as far as you are concerned, your research indicated that we can, if we so desire, just consider this, basically, de novo, first impression. We have the benefit, if we wish, of the record that we have from the ERB. But as far as you are concerned, we were not necessarily obligated or constrained by that record, and that we could, as far as you are concerned, look at this with a fresh look and, and move accordingly, as we normally do with a wetland application.
Yes, that's accurate. And that's based on Section 137-7, the appeals section of the Wetlands Chapter, that says that when a decision of the ERB is appealed to your board, it says that the planning board shall become the approving authority for such application. So you have the benefit of the record from the ERB. All of those documents are before you, but that doesn't limit you. You can ask for additional information if you feel it's, it's warranted, because you do now sit as the approval authority.
Okay.
So it's similar to a zoning board sitting in an appeal of a building inspector's interpretation.
There's one other thing I want to make, one other observation I wanted to make was, no matter what, it appears that the plan, if approved, is for a pool in the front yard. It's my understanding that that's going to require a zoning variance, because it's, and toward, it's between the, the home and the street, and it's, you know, we don't customarily do it. I think that that really has to eventually be referred to the zoning board for a variance.
I think that's, that's the first time, I think, we've heard that, so we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, right, right.
And by the way, I, I agree with your attorney's analysis of what your authority is, so there's no argument on that.
Okay. It's keeping score here.
Just to get a sense of how our regulations sometimes don't work the way they should, smoothly and everything, it's sort of like if you've read all the regulations and you understand them, and you read them wrong. Because a little bit of this and that, something.
This is why no one watches us.
The English language has many variations of.
It really does. And so, and on that note, we'll have to, we will have to check into that. However, it's interesting, so a previous iteration with a pool in roughly the same location was approved previously by the ERB. That doesn't mean that, it did not go to building permit, so perhaps that.
At building permit, they would have caught it, that it would have needed a variance. We're just telling you ahead of time that you are, if it's in this, in the front yard, they will need a variance.
Right. In any location of the, not just a setback, but all the way.
In the front yard.
Yeah, anywhere.
Right, and it looks like you're very, very constrained, so it's, it looks like we'll have to be there.
Okay. So, all right, since you're starting at the beginning, then I'm going to start with a basic diagram of the site. And then I have some photos that are on the board that are blown up. So you should be able, even without seeing it on there, you should be. Would you be, please, Fana? Thank you. Other way, like that, yeah. So this map, which is in your materials, shows the existing site. It's roughly a two-acre site, a little bit larger. There are wetlands, there is a stream on this side. This is a wetland that we are, were concerned with it, but it is not impacted by our proposed construction, as there is an existing driveway running through the property, going right in front of the house and turning into an existing garage. This existing garage was constructed around 2002, and at the time, the basement was fitted out. It has not been finished, but the basement of the garage structure, accessible only from the back, was finished with the idea, approved idea, of having, being a, function as a pool cabana. There's plumbing for showers, a bathroom, changing rooms, and a little bit of a gabbing spot. So it's been the intention for a long time to make this, somewhere in this vicinity, to have a pool that works with that particular location. Because of the, the huge drop-off over on this, on the back of the house, there's absolutely, and the setbacks, there's certainly no, no chance of a pool going in anywhere over here. We have a large septic field in this location, a big bedrock outcrop, and then the, both the combined town and DEC wetland running all along in this area.
When the garage was built and permitted, were there any indication on the plans of a pool location at that time?
I could not answer that. That was into, about 2002, so 17 years ago, and I couldn't find any old, other than what the owners provided me, the original architectural drawings that were approved. I don't have, I, I, an approved, there was no approved, to my knowledge, there was no approved site plan. They didn't intend to build it right then. Their kids were little, they didn't want to do it, they just knew down the road.
Knew down the road.
Down the road, they would like to do it.
Okay.
And I'm not even familiar, or if it's even germane, I'm not sure, to, when the Wetlands Code came into effect, if it was then and not now.
It was around back then.
Yeah, so.
In addition to the.
Yes.
To the garage, it also appears that the driveway impacts the wetland buffer as well. So I guess when they constructed the.
The existing driveway, yes.
Oh, was it, was it existing back then, or was it constructed when the garage was constructed?
I imagine, I imagine that it was extended, because there's a, in order to access that. I think that the old garage, I think there was, the original driveway came in here, and I'm pretty certain that they told me that their original garage was over on, attached to the house on this side. So they flipped it and created a courtyard in the situation. That's roughly the existing site. I'm going to, now, before I go to some of the, the proposed design, I'd like to show.
So Dennis, the, the Turner Swamp is, that's to the east of this property, the large New York State Wetland?
It's, well, hang west. So what you described as the surface-running water course, that's the eastern side, that was the wetland delineated, and then on the western side is more of your traditional forested, shrubby swamp area. It almost forms like, I, I kind of look at it like it's like tooth roots.
Like a horseshoe around it or something?
Yeah, yeah, like the roots of your, you know, just, those are the two legs of, and sort of, not the DEC wetland, but end what you have designated as Turner Swamp.
Right, okay.
Your package contains even more photos.
Right.
This is just a couple of panoramas to give you a sense. So they're always a little bit exaggerated, but for the sake of understanding the site, I think it's useful, so.
We have those on the screen.
And you have those, oh, great, you do have it.
Well, here's the thing, this is just, you will have to scroll through.
Okay.
It says you did it, but I think it would be beneficial for everybody to see.
Will it be a problem if I move over to that location?
No, not at all. You can bring the microphone with you.
Oh, okay.
Detach it.
I'm just going to do this, because then I have one more thing to hold.
That's fine, that's good.
Okay.
That's good, good idea.
Did I just lose my job?
No, you didn't. No, stay there, because I, I'm used to the boards. Now, I wasn't, I wasn't, okay, so I have to.
Just use the arrow. Yeah. Or the mouse. Okay. So, and do I have a way to point on this?
We have pointers, if you want.
Pointers, you can draw them.
Thank you. And just make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Okay.
It's not easy here.
Okay, we have the, the Hart Scrabble Road out front, so you're coming in the driveway, sweeping around, going past the existing septic field, and continuing on to, past the house. The house is just, just out of this view, right here, there is the existing garage, right there. Okay? So, let's see what else we have on this. Let's see. This particular shot is taken, um, I need this, I really need more than one board at a time. So that particular shot is taken with a view across this rock outcrop, looking up towards the garage. So this outcrop is down here, and you're pointing this way, back up, up to the garage. So essentially, there is a very large lawn area in this buffer setback, and at the very back of it are a few plants, prior to the, to the ultra-wet soils. Here you have an existing 96-square-foot playhouse, which is on some concrete footings underneath, little, probably piles, that would be proposed to be removed to help offset our gains. If one counts that, 96 square feet versus our 117 square feet, if one considered that in some way grandfathered, we're almost interchanging that one nonconform, that other nonconforming use down in this area. And we're proposing, I'll get into that, but we're proposing to make, increase this area and change a lot of this planting from ornamentals to a lot of native plant material, which we have shown in our planting plan in detail. These shots are showing, this is showing the proposed pool location. I have another, better drawing, which shows that actually, we sort of superimposed it on the photo. This is the existing garage, the main front side, where the cars go in. This is the back, where, this is the main door to that shower and changing area down below. And you have to go down, you go down maybe about three steps from right here.
Into the building?
Into the building, yeah. Oh, here, this one shows, this is good. So artistically speaking, this is roughly the line of the setback in question that we're trying so hard to fit a swimming pool into. And that is roughly the size pool we're trying to do. So this indicates this bit of water that we are seeking a variance for.
And how big is that pool?
That pool is proposed 18 by 40.
18 by 40.
Yes.
And that was the preferred dimension?
That is our preferred dimension. And I'll, I have an analysis of the, of the previously approved designs, so you can compare and contrast. But what I want to call your attention to here is this side of the garage. So on the side of the garage, you have a stone veneer on, on the building, and you have a series of planter walls, which are retaining soil and holding the soil away from that building. We have a non-native, as was pointed out, cryptomeria, which the owners happen to love. And even though it's not a native, the owners feel it's very valuable in its location. It buffers the whole corner of the building. It keeps, it separates the pool area from the driveway. And from a landscape value standpoint, an artistic aesthetic standpoint, it has a lot of value. It also does provide environmental benefits of a tree, period. And I think that if, I think we could, just to digress a minute, if we said to everyone, oh, every tree in our community that isn't native, therefore it has no value or is not worth saving, we would have very few trees left. So there's, we have a lot of non-natives that still have value in the landscape, and here it is here. So you can see how it nestles that garage in quite nicely, and would be, you can understand how we could start to create, we could ameliorate and add more of them, and start to really nestle a new pool down in this area.
Now, that sketch just shows the pool itself.
That's only, I'll show you all of this, yes. I just want, it's just, for clarity.
Right.
We're just really trying to show the basics. What I want to point out along here, that when I, because I'm going to soon talk about the other scheme, because there was a lot of questions that the ERB had, rightly so, what other alternatives did you study? And we really did study them a lot. And one of them proposed, the, the prior landscape architects, colleagues of mine, who are esteemed and come to your planning board and the ERB all the time, so I don't, I don't want to pull about their, part their work, I don't know their reasons. They probably were trying to do everything 100% as of right, but it ended up, for us, a scheme that just cannot work. And I'd like to tell you why. And one of the things I want you to just hold in your minds, if you can, is that this series of retaining walls runs along here. So generally, when one constructs a swimming pool, what we call the overdig, is six to seven feet around the backside of the coping of the pool, meaning that's where you have to excavate, to get down into the, to, very deeply into the ground to build footings. Their pool was only six or seven feet from this facade, and going the other way, because they were trying to jam it into that corner. I had my structural engineer look at it, this would require not only losing a lot of vegetation next to kind of a starved structure, but would require some sort of major underpinning, so to not undermine this garage during this excavation. So it, additionally, there are circulation problems, but that is one structural red flag that was thrown up to us right away.
So, I'm sorry, just to understand that.
Yes.
Just a, just a, just to understand that point, the, the depth of the pool, you're saying would go below the bottom of the foundation of the garage?
Uh, yes.
It would?
In effect, it, potentially, yes. I mean, it, it depends on which end of the pool you cite there, but yes, very likely, you have to go down. Well, you could put the shallow end down there, but there still is a very deep, pool footings go very deep in the ground, and this...
Sort of building footings?
Yes, they do, that is correct, but you have to go right up, you have to take off, you have to lower the earth along that part of the facade, and in doing that, you're gonna expose, this, this building is only constructed of stone veneer, therefore you have, meaning, it's just stone...
More than veneer, otherwise it's not standing up.
Sorry.
Cinder blocks behind it?
It has cinder blocks behind it, so there, those, these stones, this veneer is sitting on a shelf. The shelf goes down into the ground in a number of feet. When you expose that, when you expose that facade, you will be exposing all of that foundation wall, which was previously covered up with soil, and covering up all this, this ugly part, if you will, of the stone. So you have an aesthetic problem of how to deal with that building, and you also have a potential free-slaw problem of coming so close, but...
And how close would it be?
About six to seven feet.
Did you have the geotechnical engineer do a full report?
No.
For the board to look at?
No, because we have spent the amount of, you know, that it's, I can tell, I've had, well, I've been doing this thirty-seven years, I mean, that, that's not, that's not the only reason, that is just one of the compelling reasons that we looked at, that we do not like that location. There's a, there's a, you know, a geotechnical engineer study is not, is only one factor of, I mean, if we want me, if you want me to run through these things, I'll run them right now. This is the old, the old design. A thirty-four by sixteen foot pool is too small to be worthwhile. So if you want to do swim, the, the average pool in most homeowners' minds, and these are, again, this is a subjective thing, I grant you, but if you talk to people in the pool industry, it's generally twenty-five forty. Thirty-four by sixteen is a very small pool. There were twelve infiltrators located within the buffer zone. Now, the, the board stated, this is nowhere written in the code, but the, in the wetlands code, the ERB told us that they don't consider infiltrators to have impact on the wetlands. So just in case people aren't familiar, this is not in my presentation, I just thought of it today when I was leaving, in case you aren't familiar with what infiltrator structures look like and what happens, there is an enormous excavation dig that has to happen, even, it, this is all assuming if this soil profile is sufficient to actually detain water and filter it, which we don't know, because I didn't see any soil reports from the previous consultant, but even if they were feasible, they're not as, they are generally accepted in our, when our wetlands consultant appeared for the TDRB, he went through this, why they are considered not as environmentally sustainable for wetlands as rain gardens and planting mitigation. In any event, I, this is simply, just to make a quick point, one of many, because nothing is simple, nothing is just, oh, if you'd handle that, that was it. It's, it's a whole series of factors. This is a major...
Do they perform any deep test holes in percolation rates?
No.
Because if you did, you may be able to cut down on the amount.
Hi. That would be something for the ERB to consider, and for us, it, once we know that we can put the pool where it functionally works, we could go to that next step to determine if we even need this. We proposed and said what is considered much more sustainable in today's environmental world, which is a rain garden, planted rain gardens.
Still needs deep test holes, though.
That, we'll need test holes, but again, once we know where we're putting a pool and what the requirements are, then we go to that level. If we can't even get to an agreed-upon location, there's no point in doing all that study. Yes.
You're, you're laying out a hypothetical line based on thirty-seven years, but, you know, soil is all sorts, and it's all different types, and it varies markedly by a factor of ten as to what you get, easily.
I agree, right, okay.
And so, you're gonna be dealing with us, I believe, as to what happens, not the ERB mentioned then.
Yes, right.
It'll be with us, so that we can put together a package that, you know, recognizes what you proposed, where it's reasonable to us, and then there'll be other questions, such as Bob just asked.
Hundred percent.
All right, just...
I'm clear on that. I understand that. This is only, I did not design this original, I'm just trying to walk you through what was approved before with not one, one karax, one wetland grass, no mitigation. They were gonna rip it up, do all of this, plus a lot more. This creates compacted soils, you have to drive all around this area, the area of disturbance is pretty impossible, you can't really, you know, build this without driving equipment all the way around it. So it is just to say that my consultants, and me personally, based on my experience, I don't see an infiltrator system as having zero impact on wetlands. So that's all I wanted to say about that. All right, so just getting into a couple functional aspects of the old design before I present our new design. The front door to the house is here. We already have an awkward condition, one would prefer not to have to cross a driveway to go to one's swimming pool, be that as it may, in order to make the grading work, they had a, and also to fit entirely within the little red triangle, they moved the stair access to this area, which is beneath this elevation, almost to, right here, to the corner, near that, then that, that green dot is roughly that large cryptomeria I was showing you. So they have a retaining wall there and steps, so no matter what door you come out, whether you come out the back door or the front door, architecturally, you do not have a good relationship there. Then you have, so you have a very small and tight seating area right up next to the pool, you have the pool itself, the sixteen by thirty-four, you have the six to seven foot walkway between the water's edge and this building, so you would come down these steps, squeeze around those lounge chairs, where you have about three feet, if you put chairs there, squeeze around that pool terrace, down another set of steps, turn right, turn right again, and now you're in your pool house. And then you have a retaining wall here, and then they showed a pool fence in a square pattern, enclosing the pool, not incorporating any area on the back of the pool house, or recognizing in any way, shape, or form the naturalistic landscape beyond. Now, I'm saying all this in sort of designer's terms, and I know that, that basic charge of the ERB is to look at its stated environmental concerns, but I mention this, for sake of comparison, to when an architect proposes a house addition, or, or a bedroom addition, or a shed, and we didn't find any record, but perhaps it exists, but are architects, when they're designing buildings, quizzed as to things like, well, do you really have to have a hallway separating these bedrooms? Why couldn't you have compressed it and had two bedrooms instead of one? Is that, is that living room exact, does it need to be that big, could it be two more feet back? So what I'm trying to make a point is that when you're talking about site design, it's no different than architecture, and we look at all those things. Where do you sit? How do you get to the bathroom? Where do you need to go? We're looking at how trees play in. So there are a lot of factors that go into good landscape design, and that makes, that adds value to a property, as opposed to something that checks all the boxes from a book, but isn't a place that would be fun to hang out. This has, they left a very large parking area right across, right, right behind it, the angles are all bad, it doesn't work with the house, I could go on and on, I won't, but these are questions that, again, just to hold in the back of your mind, is compared to the criteria put forth, if, if Steve's idea is correct, that the same rules, the same objectivity needs to be applied to a swimming pool as other improvements that homeowners want to make, then these, then these things do come into play, and that does start to explain why we want to do the pool the way we have shown it. Retaining walls limit circulation around the pool, I've already talked about that. Small pool enclosure feels like a pen. Of course, you know, that, obviously, we could change the pool fence, but this is just showing you what was proposed. Hemmed in by retaining walls, kits could fall off, it, it's, it's not, not a great So this is another, an alternate design that we looked at, where we tried to fit a long pool fitting in this area, so that we're a little more conforming. We still ran into a lot of problems with topography. This site is not flat, despite what photographs and might lead you to believe, or even a site visit, when you start to level it off, it really isn't. We have here, in, in this design where we flipped the pool the other way, this was suggested early on by one of the board members that we take a look at, we have, we have, we say we must maintain a distance for clear access to the, to the pool, the, uh, pool constructability vis a vis existing wall and footing. So that, that means we need to get, basically, that's just saying we need to get around here in a gracious way to come into the pool cabana. This also pushed us out into this corner, where we had a seventeen percent slope, which we felt was just too steep to be acceptable, and then we have our, we have another constraint here, which we're too close, as you can see here, seven, a twenty-foot setback from the existing septic tank, which is the red, red square. And already mentioned the garage foundation, that we'd prefer not to have to go to extraordinary measures to protect. But I think I've, I've gone probably too far in the alternative, I'd like to talk about our, our proposed design, so let me see where that is in here. Letters. I don't know if it's just all Word documents, or... If I can do that faster, I will. Sabrina, is there an index in here, or is there a, is there, but there, there's a list of, all the files were separate and they were all named, but these just appear to all be dumped in?
They weren't also.
Okay. That's how I'd see it.
We'll get the monitors, we'll get them.
Oh, there's something.
These are pictures, wait, we looked at the pictures. This is the wetlands report. This is Paul's wetlands map, Paul Jennings. There must be a quicker way to control up to the top.
To drag it.
Sabrina, there's several links, did you pull this video?
Bob, where are the slopes out here?
Yeah.
Do we have, with this preferred proposal, do we have any slope issues?
One, we separated the planning boards.
Uh, they may have to do a steep slopes analysis.
And the other is just the one document.
She might have to go back to the internet.
Depending on which layout.
Right.
I don't see it.
Bring it up to the top.
I didn't see it, I don't see the boards in here, in this particular, I see only all the other documents, I don't see...
So then, the other tab up top, there's another tab up top, click on that.
It's probably in another folder.
PowerPoint presentation?
Nope, nope, further over.
It says Town of Newcastle.
Yeah, click on that.
Okay.
Scroll down on that page.
Which one did you open, Sabrina?
Well, no, 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 go back up.
Go back on top.
See, see where on the top, you've got two documents, is there, see if there's a third?
Scroll down a little bit more.
One more.
This one?
Scroll down.
Scroll down. There you go, plan set.
That was his plan set.
Be the third one, yep.
Okay, oh, this, okay, good. Okay, this, this board cuts it off a little bit, so that I can somehow figure the percentage there, but this...
You could do full screen on the top, there's three round circles on the bottom right of that screen, the top circle is view in full screen.
And then there's the plus and the minus, if you want to zoom it out.
On the bottom of the screen.
The right-hand side.
They're gray.
There's three circles.
Or go up.
Little more, there you go.
There you go, that one.
Okay, thank you. This board, which I also have with me, has a whole lot of area calculations that Steve went over, and we show the existing condition, the wetland, the, the various wetland limit lines, the buffer lines, and this area represents a area of grass, mowed lawn. This area, this, this drawing shows our proposed swimming pool in context, which I will go to that larger board in a moment, shows the, the part that extends over the limit line, as well as, so, so because this town line is in this V shape here, there's also an encroachment on this side, which does not contain any water, the old plan did, that was where we had a spa, but we took that out as one of our compromise measures. So those are the only things that would fall on this side.
That's, is that your construction access in that, what is that, southeast corner?
That does not, this plan does not show the construction access.
So what is the impact in that corner?
I'm sorry. Which corner, right here? That, that, in the, in the, in the finished, that is, in the finished design, it is only this retaining wall that comes down here, and the set of steps to get down to the area.
So the green slashed area, the...
All the green, the green areas are, that is our, roughly our proposed wetland plantings, and anywhere there's new, a new green is where we're, is we're proposing new plantings.
Wetland plantings.
Wetland mitigation plantings. That's the old design we already talked about. So this is the design, this is the first design, I don't want to spend too much time on this, because we're not asking for this anymore, but just, the new design is very similar, but there are some further improvements. So what we have proposed, what we started from the beginning, and we're still proposing it in our second scheme, in an effort to keep the minimum possible encroachment, given what we feel is a serviceable scheme, we, the client agreed to consider removing a portion of their driveway. So they have a large pull-out area here, so we have squeezed this driveway as far as possible, so that you can still get through to the garage, but you can no longer stop here and park a car. Then we added a set of steps on center with the steps, the existing steps that lead up to the door of the house, so that there's a nice relationship and a good functional way to get through. We also, for, beyond the structural limitations with the garage, we preferred this orientation, because when you are in this garden, in this landscape, one, one greatly appreciates being sort of surrounded, enveloped by green space. When you shove the pool down to this end, very close to the driveway, when you're there on site, obviously you don't see the setback lines, and it feels so arbitrarily pinned up against this side. There is an elevation change, we can't put it any closer than we have it, and still get the steps required to get up to this level, we squeezed and squeezed and squeezed. We have all kinds of planting down in this area, this is, this area washes out a lot, that's why, and it also, we wanted to have a little screening from the driveway, also trying to have plant massings that protect the views up to this area, so the more we can orient your view this way, as opposed to down here, when you have the pool going the other way, you're thrusting the view out towards a bend in the road. Again, you're just seeing driveway all the time. Another thing that we proposed is taking the existing wall and making it a little bit taller, in order so that the retaining wall becomes also a screen wall and also a pool wall, so, I mean, a pool enclosure wall. So rather than having the pen around the pool... So rather than having the pen around the pool, we are creating a double-sided stone wall on top of the existing wall, so there's literally no disturbance there, just raising the height of it to be our legal pool enclosure, and again, to create this wonderful park-like setting and mitigate the fact that we are having to cross the driveway to get there.
Have a question?
Yep.
On that, this, what's the elevation difference between here and here?
Let me-
Roughly?
I'm gonna tell you.
I won't hold you to it.
No, it's okay, I just have to, I don't know what I'll have them to handle.
Put it up there, Tom, again, to let me know what you're looking at.
Yeah, what's, you know, the road is down here, driveway is this way.
Go up, up, up. Yeah, let me, let me tell you though.
And the, Tom, the, what's the elevation change from here to here? Can you see the pool?
The grades on it.
Yeah, if this is-
Yes, you can, I'm sorry, but I don't have a grading plan on these boards.
It's not leveled, it looks like.
Do you have the grades on that plan? I don't.
I do on this one.
Let's see, let's see what you've got.
Sorry. Well, it's certainly as leveled as this one.
Well, this doesn't, we don't have the driveway grades, we don't know.
But you have these grades, right?
Right, but we don't know what this is. See, this is below, this wall is, this wall is about two to three feet above this elevation.
So about that stone wall would have to be four feet to comply with the pool requirements?
Okay, but we have this, here, look here.
We have 390, about 394 here.
Yes, Tom will look at that when they open the BP. It has to surround the whole pool some way, somehow.
Right, yes.
404, it's roughly, roughly five, six feet sweeping up.
From there and there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You know, it's-
Did anyone look at the county regulations with the separation distance from the absorption fields of the existing septic to the pool? Because they do have specific regulations.
We did, that's listed in here, and we did, in fact, we did check into that, and we also called them and had a conversation.
What is that separation?
Depending where you're above it, or at the same grade, it's either 50 feet or 20 feet.
Correct, and that's where we, that's where the 20-foot figure that I was referring to came from earlier, so we are above it.
You have an issue with the stormwater, those storms have to be minimum 50 feet, they cannot be above the septic.
Correct, well, that's, that's another, that's another constraining factor when I talk about all these-
Right now, you're about 22 feet away.
With the rain garden?
The rain garden was close to, yeah, they weren't 50, I checked both. Infiltrators were about 22 feet, rain garden is not 50 feet either, so, if that's above it, you can have a problem with the county.
Right here you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the rain garden, we would make a depression.
Right, it's still an infiltration device, it has to be minimum 50 feet.
Right, okay, well, I think that's a-
It can't be above it elevation-wise either, so you might want to check with the county.
Yeah, well, we could, but that would be, that's certainly a fungible shape that could have a lot of different configurations.
But again, if it's above it in elevation, you can't have it. So check with the county, regardless of the distance.
Well, okay.
Check with Fred Beck.
These are some of our first-phase cross-sections that show some of the relationships in cross-sections so you can understand a little bit where we're coming from and how we're trying to come down some steps, the existing steps, cross a smaller driveway, down the steps to the swimming pool level, slight berm, and down to the existing grade below. This shows you the view, if you recall that picture I showed you of the entrance to the back of the garage and thus pool cabana. Come across, you can see that the relationship of the pool, double pool gate to that front door entrance there. This was formally showing the spa which would not go there.
So you have the deep end of the pool and that area that's in the buffer?
In the far end, correct, because we have, because you have a little seating area up here.
Well, okay, but-
Because you can't, see, see here how it drops off? You wouldn't want to have your seating area down at that end.
How deep is your deep end there?
Eight feet, I think.
Okay, is there a real need for eight feeters or a diving board or something? Even that's too shallow for a diving board?
Well, I guess our reasoning was that infiltrators are often dug to that depth, so, and in terms of the distance below, because we're raising this area a little bit to keep it above, the net effect is only probably, I don't know, I'd have to look exactly, but probably only six feet or so down because of, you see how, you see the little existing, it's hard to see, there's that existing grade and the proposed grade?
Right.
So, we're really not-
I thought you indicated before that, you know, when you dig these pools, you have to dig that much deeper, so it just seems to me that going eight feet, that's gonna be-
Well, you do, but it would be really, it would be very much backwards to come down to a pool, when, you see how much you're digging it whether there or there, the distance of the dig in relation to the wetland, there is no environmental reason that I know of that, that an extra three feet or so in terms of the three to four feet in terms of the pool depth has any impact on the wetland. Again, we had our wetlands reviewer look at this and there was no, he saw no difference. Likewise, if you are digging a house, if you're building a house, whatever, we have an example of many houses in wetland buffers, they have basements, they have deep footings below this elevation, so we didn't really find that to be a limiting factor with the wetland.
Well, I think you need to supply us some information as to why it needs to be eight feet and why it can't be the same depth. It may be, it may wash out, but I think it's something that, again, you know, on the ask in terms of where we might end up on this thing, that could be a factor because we're hearing that it-
We can make a note of that.
Yeah.
That's something that we need to review with the owners.
So if I could ask-
Sure, let me go back.
That's fine, that's perfect right there, thank you. You said a number of times you have to dig a lot deeper than the depth of the pool in order to build the pool, how much deeper?
No, the width of the pool.
Well, the width, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about depth also.
The width.
Width.
But you have to dig deeper anyway because you still-
Well, you have to dig deeper because you have gravel and-
Of course, drainage, et cetera. Yeah, but machinery pumps-
It's like three or four feet deeper, it's just-
It's just a couple of feet, a couple of feet, it's a lot, a bunch of gravel that goes in there.
Put a rough grade in there, put some gravel in there, put some gunite in there, I mean, some reinforcing, and you're good to go.
This is our own, this is our construction access plan that shows all the required erosion fencing and soil stockpiles and the rest of it, I don't think we need to go over that.
Could you go back to the proposed plan and give the colored photo?
Yeah.
The, it seems-
I want to show you the new color, I want to show you the new one, the one that's actually being proposed, because you're not on that.
Oh, okay, so this is not it?
No, because we're not, we took out, as a compromise, I'm just taking you through the history of the project, as a compromise measure, we moved the finally proposed pool, we made it a foot smaller, and we moved it a couple feet in toward, further, even further in and took out the spa.
Okay, excuse my question about the spa?
Yeah, we just, you know, they didn't want to give it up, but we were trying very hard to come up with-
Well, why couldn't you locate the spa on the other side closer?
We're putting it in the pool, there's no room circulation-wise to put it on the other side, but we decided to put it in the pool.
Okay.
The idea was originally, let's have it outside the pool so that they can extend the season and winterize the swimming pool and leave the spa going, but they were, the barks are really trying to do their best to work with the board, so we just removed it and put it into the spa, into the swimming pool itself. So that's the construction plan. Now, let me go down to the planting plan, I mean, we could go over it, but there's a lot of very good native species, trees, shrubs. This is a record copy for you of the submittal that was approved by the DEC in January, we received our permit from them first.
Well, the DEC line, the pool's outside the DEC line, isn't it? Am I looking at this correctly?
Um-
It's not much of approval if it's outside the line.
Well, I don't, we don't have Paul here to speak to that.
I'm looking at the sketch.
The term is authorization, it was a general permit authorization.
But again, it was, it seems to me that that authorization was forthcoming almost as a matter of right because it was really outside of the DEC buffer line.
There was, there was, well, there was grading and work in that area-
I see.
Which, which did impact.
Oh, I see, in this one area, this one small area.
Yes, where the, where the rain garden was slated.
Okay. Do we have your proposed sketch in here?
Yes, it's coming. They have, I'm sorry, they have different criteria as well in terms of the, how they, they will, given the low, what they felt is the low impact of this project, they also have a more, I don't know how you call it, maybe, maybe you know the technical term, but they have a more rapid review-
The Corps of Engineers has a nationwide permit program.
If you're under a certain-
DEC is a general permit program. Newcastle just has the wetland regulations and you need to apply for a permit, so we don't really get into sort of these predetermined authorizations or you only need to do so much because we as a governmental body, whichever that agency may be, have decided that if you stay within these thresholds, it's already assumed that it's going to be minimal impact, so as long, unless there's special condition or something to that effect, we're ready to issue, you know, an authorization, a nationwide permit without going through an alternatives analysis, without worrying about a public hearing, that type of, so that is the difference.
Yeah, but the Venn diagram is not really congruent.
Right, right, okay.
All right, so this is getting into our new scheme where we, this is the color version, where we just have this label that we, because we didn't, coloring, rendering the plan takes a long time, so we have this shown where we're taking this out, taking the spa out, shortening the retaining wall, bringing the spa into the pool, and shortening the water's edge. So, I thought that it would be useful, I actually brought a tape measure, to see that we're talking about 18 feet, which is basically the end of that wall, thank you.
I'm reminded of my cousin Benny.
18 feet.
It's 18 feet, your honor!
It's 18 feet.
Your honor, please, what the hell?
And at that, and at one end, it's about three feet over the lawn, and at the other end, it's about, I think I measured six, so it's coming out to about here, going back to that triangle. So that's over that vast green space with the 6,000-plus square feet of new wonderful plantings, so we thought that we had really answered the spirit of the law.
And 40 feet is likely from this wall to the other side of the lobby.
It's more than that, yeah, more than this room, I would say.
Yeah, it's the other side of lobby wall.
That's right, yeah.
That's 40 feet, so 18 by 40 is not 12 feet.
But when you're swimming, if you're six feet tall, but if you're, if you're six feet tall and you're swimming 40 feet, yeah, it's, it goes pretty fast.
I used to swim every morning, he still does. That's why.
Yeah, okay, well, then you're, I don't need to tell you, you're more, more swimmer than I am. This is our new planting plan where, so after, so only two members of the, of the board came to our site, when we had our site meeting, two members of the ERB came, we waited a good half hour, they thought more people were coming, we waited and waited and waited and waited, and only the two came, and some official, a junior official from the town came. So while they were there, they did-
Is that Kellen?
No. No, you know what, is this relevant to this discussion?
Well, I'm just, I'm just explaining, I'm just explaining, well, what I'm about to say is that the people who were there, those two people who were there-
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, thought that it would be a good idea if we added more mitigation plantings in this section where it's particularly wet in the back. So, we did that on this plan, and that's only to say that, that was, once they got to the site, they saw that as a positive thing to do.
I couldn't, no, I couldn't.
And we complied with that. As well as they had suggested in our in-person meeting, do you really need to have a separate spa, and at that point, the barks had told us they did, but then they agreed to compromise and put it back, so we came up with this scheme moving it up.
I'm trying to follow along, but I-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Not, I'm not following along, that's okay. I, I'm just trying to find in this mountain of paper-
Yes.
Where your preferred application is, I'm trying to read along, I'm watching here.
What's the plan you want to build?
Right, do we have that?
Yes.
Actually, we must have it.
Yes, we indicated that the final plan with the spa in, in the pool-
Definitely.
And the additional plantings and so forth was the preferred plan, because that's the one that they voted on, so.
It's this one, I have it on the board real quickly, L 2.1.
Was, Mr. Silverberg, was that the one that was-
This was the one that was-
Declined or?
Yes, or whatever they did.
Ultimately, this preferred, yes, okay, okay.
Yes, I'm sure-
Yeah, and I think I said that in my letter, that that final plan was the one.
Right here, here it is, right there. It's this one, I simply colored in this little yellow area where that is, so that you could see.
Yeah, okay.
Right here, but that, that is the preferred plan, L 2.1 with the date, June 17th, 2019.
And the relocation, the spa into the pool was coverage?
It was to, the, it was to reduce the amount of water that was requested in the buffer zone, because the previous spa was here, so you have, here is your buffer limit line, so this area was also in the wetland buffer, so we removed that and added only plantings and shortened this wall to just the minimum required to get us down from this level to this level.
Where was the pool equipment thing?
Great question, there is an area in the pool house where all the pool equipment can go, and as long as we vent it properly, we can locate it down here in a utility room. So all the piping, that is, I'm glad you brought that up, so then all the piping can run along a corridor that is not in, in any buffer zone, that can come along here, and that was true of the original scheme as well, that's not unique to us. I think that that, in an, I mean, that's abbreviated, but I think that that includes, you know, we have- We have it drawn every which way, but the planting plan, we put it all in one to show the rain garden cross-section, some construction details, and the planting areas, but I think that leaves you the basic. The other, other thing I just wanted to talk about briefly is, why do we propose such a large amount of wetlands buffer, wetland buffer plantings instead of lawn? And I just wanted to sort of remind everyone what, why planting is better than lawns, it slows runoff, it acts as flooding control, it protects it from soil erosion, it creates a habitat for wildlife, it filters sediments and removes excess nutrients that can be applied to lawns.
Is there, is there a particular reason why the orientation of the pool is fixed this way? Could it be the same size and run perpendicularly?
Right, we looked at that, and that was one of the early ones that I said we had trouble with the grading, and we still encroached.
I understand that, but I mean-
We still had a similar degree of encroachment.
Okay.
And I think routine may also impact it, the subsurface structure of the garage building.
See, I'm not buying that. I wouldn't go that close.
No, we pulled it, in our, in our one, we pulled it a better distance away.
Well, in this, can you move that just a little bit down?
Sorry.
What, oops.
That's, these are the sections.
The, somewhere down here, there's a point, right, where the wetlands come to that V?
Yes.
What's the distance between that V and this, in this building? It's certainly a lot more than 40 feet.
It's a lot, it's definitely more, but we have, hold on, let me find a board that would have that on here. We have the septic tank in our way, so here's the-
The septic tank is up here, isn't it?
No.
No, it's here. The fields are down here, but-
It's near the-
The tank is, it's hard to see on here, but here, look on, right here.
I see.
Right there, okay.
Got it.
So this is, this is a pool turned-
Are you speaking in the microphone, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is the-
You can take it off the stand.
You can take it off if you want.
Okay.
Just pause right now.
There you go.
This is the pool turned the other direction, same size, brought over enough room to get by, if you can imagine it, without the spa. We found that this distance, this is two 17-foot three, is too close to the septic tank.
I was talking about orienting the pool this way.
That is, that's how we want to do it, that's, that's our proposal. That's exactly what we want to do.
Well, eureka.
Yeah.
You just have to find this part, it'd be great.
I'm sorry that you can't find it, here, it's, here's the, here's the proposed.
Yeah, the routine.
We're going this way. No, it works much better, it allows us all this, we can keep away from the septic, we have, the pool keep, what?
Let me see this, no, the pool.
Right here.
It's still oriented the same way, I'm talking about this way, coming down this way.
Okay, that's what I just showed you, that's the alternative I showed you, that's this. But then we have the slopes.
Oh, that one, up here, up here, okay.
That, that's the previous one that we can't, that we don't feel is adequate, because we can't get around to this area, all of these bullet points were our objections to that.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought would be that.
The retaining walls.
No, no, my thought would be that if you, if you are impacting these wetlands here on this side.
Yes.
At that point, it seems to me that probably they're functioning at a lower level than on the other side.
That's why we added that.
And so by, so by pulling the pool, you know, making it your width that you prefer, eighteen by forty, or sixteen by forty, whatever it is, but pulling the pool down this way, if it, if it goes into that area of the wetland, perhaps we don't worry about that as much.
As much, right.
And, and again, I don't know what the slopes are, we haven't seen that, but again, that's why I asked, is there any particular reason why you are wedded to this one, what's the east-west orientation?
There's a couple reasons, but here is, here are the physical reasons why. This is the, this is the solution that we were asked to look at, that we did.
You know, I'm sorry, it would be really helpful.
Yes, we found that, we have that.
If you could do it up on the screen for all of us, thank you.
You're right. I just didn't, I just, I'm not sure how these are arranged.
I think the hand drawing was in the other package.
Thank you.
It is.
Okay, so.
Do you remember where you went?
If I go to the PowerPoint.
This is, this was the third thing on the agenda.
I'm going to go back to this.
If you just go back to the PowerPoint tab up top.
Up, all, top, top, top.
Third tab over, I think that's where it was.
And then it was in, it was in here, is that a finding?
Great.
This drawing is rotated from the other drawing, so that's why it's a little bit confusing.
Right.
Yes, you're right. The house is here, right?
Oh, okay.
Okay. This rotates at the other direction. This is, becomes, when we give ourselves the required six or seven feet to get around this end of the pool, with a forty-foot pool, we are still over by, we're at seventeen foot from the septic tank, seventeen foot three, so we're still three feet too close. That's one of the main reasons. We, this pushes the grading so that we have a very, a fourteen percent slope, so this, we're trying to create a nice flat area around the pool, but now we have this slope away right at the end, so you can't really sit at that end because you're angled off, and this side as well. You're also, on this side, we have a steep slope to get down to existing grade quickly enough. End of garage in line with pool is awkward access. Well, from our designer's standpoint, we didn't like the fact that when you stand at this end and look back at the pool, the, the corner of the building is right on the center line. So that's not the prime reason, these are just a whole conglomeration of factors, we do these studies, and in point of fact, we did many more, we didn't just look at one thing, we really, believe me, we really tried to figure out an orientation that would work. We also didn't like how this orients one's view, when you stand at the head of the pool, you're still looking, as I would try to explain before, you're still looking straight ahead to basically the curve of the driveway. And we can't really plant here because the septic lines go right to the edge of the driveway. That was our other look.
Okay.
Other questions?
Sabrina, did you have any comments? Bob, did you have any comments at this time? Did you have some comments, or you, we have your memo, of course. By the way, those who have, Dennis, this is Dennis.
Dennis, really?
Hi, Dennis.
How are you? Dennis, why are you here tonight? Why am I here tonight? Never here.
You came for the book.
You must be our new environmental coordinator.
Well, you're always here.
Welcome.
And my first day on the job was attending this meeting, so.
Today is the first day?
No, when you came and requested a vote from the ERB, that was my first day slash night employee here.
Oh, I'm, I didn't even recall it.
So you know there is.
Kept it quiet.
Yeah, you were just an observer.
There is a trial period. If, if, at the end of thirty days you don't like us, we get fired.
Please don't like us.
Anyway, Dennis, you submitted a comprehensive memo, and if you just want to highlight some of the major points, if we haven't covered it, feel free if not.
I mean, without speaking specifically to the memo and just hearing the explanation and justification and alternatives, I just, like, felt there was a lot of interchangeability between, now we're in wetlands function mode, now we're in landscaping mode, now we're in, and, kind of like, just for example, you know, just because you're doing plantings, I mean, it's intuitive, I agree, right? Okay, so you want to maybe step up in terms of, of, you know, want to go from mode to not mode to plantings and whatnot, but just because you're planting in a wetland buffer doesn't necessarily mean you're doing wetland mitigation. Like, in, in, part of the reason why I sort of included this map is because, you know, this is a swamp sanctuary, this is, entire complex is DEC 08, and, so for example, more might be better, it might not be better, does it need it? Does it not need it? And to sort of, you know, try to say, can we determine that or not, I mean, even in looking at the wetland delineation report, even looking at the planting plan, as I was standing there the one time that I got to, you know, take a look at the site, I'm like, there's like no existing inventory of the vegetation that's here. It's just, you know, characteristic of, well, you have a mature footplain forest here, and you have swamps, and, and even the area that you pointed out in the one photo, which is near the mode edge, which is landscaped, but I thought it was landscaped almost like consistent with the hydrology of the area. I mean, you have river birch, I remember that, that is native. I saw junkas effusus, soft rush, that is native. The ilex is in fruit now, that's native. So, so when you made the comment of, we're going to replant here, I know what you're proposing, but I need to know what you're proposing to replace as well, just to sort of, you know what I'm saying, gauge at what level, other than acreage, that there's going to be some sort of functional improvement.
Right.
To an area that's described as contiguous with Turner Swamp Sanctuary.
Yes.
So that's.
Right, so.
My generic overall, for starters.
Just to clarify that, I mean, I, I do, when we come for the formal hearing, we'll have our Paul Janik with us to help with that. But we are not, just to be clear, we are proposing new plantings to remove lawn, not to remove existing appropriate wetland plants, we're not taking those out. But there's, there could be, if, you know, I don't know, if there's a whole bunch of hydrangea back there, whatever, we're, we're trying to be more sympathetic, but we're not, but the main thing that we're trying to do is to remove lawn to get new mitigation plantings. And so, we have only been encouraged from, from day one, when I first came to visit your former, your predecessor, I went over this plan with him in detail, and he said, this is amazing, these are great plans, you're really, you know, he was very encouraging. However, he said, but the board, for whatever reason, doesn't approve pools in the, in the buffer. So, we were like, huh, that's not logical, and Paul Janik was there with us and went, they talked about all the reasons that we've just talked about, why that doesn't make sense, if there are variances available for other uses. So, at that point, he said, well, you know, give it a shot, you know, bring it in and see what they say, I'm just telling you what the history has been. So, we, all I can say, we did, I made a very sincere effort to make what we are, what we understand is a far more environmentally sustainable design, and because mitigation plantings, rather than lawn area, have been shown to decrease runoff, filter nutrients, decrease sediment.
Agreed.
So, that is the basis for our decision.
So, as I've said in my memo, like, to sort of stage it, you could stop mowing, you know what I mean? That's another, which I know that you proposed as well. So, my point is, is that it's this constant, more is better, and pushing a design, and more is better, and push it, like, in other words, there's an interchangeability, and that's kind of what the memo was getting at, as to why the mitigation doesn't come on the table yet. Like, you have to go through the analysis first, and then compensate for losses, because here, it's almost, I think I used the word leverage in my memo, and I think it was Ronald Reagan, dilution is the solution to pollution, well, to me, it's, if you're going to keep proposing more mitigation to get what you want, that could be like a pay to pollute program, and that's, that's why mitigation doesn't enter the table.
That certainly is.
Because you're looking to just consider how to reduce, how to minimize, and I, and I agree, maybe the law and the environment don't always translate so well into each other, and you can come upon a site and say, oh, wouldn't it be great if we let them do this alternative so that they do a little bit of an impact, so that we could do all this planting and make this area, you know, raise its beautification, raise its function, raise its whatever, but, you know, and as I, why I brought the Corps of Engineers into my memo, it's, it's never been interpreted that way. Like, this is how the permitting process since Clean Water Act is gone, it's this analysis first, and then we discuss if we can't avoid, you know, how is your, so, that's the part.
I hear you. Well, certainly, I'm, I'm sure that the clients would be relieved to reduce their mitigation planting by half and just stop mowing. It was our.
We're not there yet.
If you're not there yet.
I might, I might be at a point, like, if we could design something where thirty-seven and a half feet works and you're not in the wetlands, then maybe, oh, I got a happy client, and I just saved a ton of money in landscaping, you know what I mean? Like, that's kind of the, you know, other approach that is in my mind too, because I know, I was in your position for a very long time in my prior career, I, I understand clients, I understand, so, but, when it comes to the wetlands and the wetland permitting process, it's, it's this alternatives analysis, it's avoid, minimize, and then that mitigate word does not come into play until you satisfy those first two.
Well, I think we, we need to respond to your memo, and we said at the beginning that we would do that, and we're going to have Mr. Janik look at it, and, and try to respond, you know, in a technical way, to what the concerns are and.
Well, I, I would give you a piece of advice, and rather just, you're free to respond, but if you would respond in terms of actually providing information, I understand you can argue the law, et cetera, but I think what we're getting at is, what we've seen here is a lot of measurements, and that was one of the concerns I had, I'm, I'm glad that Dennis articulated it better than I could. And that is, we've seen a lot about, it's only 179 square feet, it's only 300 square feet here, but we haven't received any kind of information in terms of, what is the function of that 179 square feet that you're impacting? Is it all, you know, you know, fill from back when the, the garage was built? Is it really important soils? What's going on there? So I think that kind of analysis is what I think Dennis is leaning toward, he, he, we need to have that kind of information, not just square footage. Square footage doesn't speak to function, and doesn't speak to performance. So, it may be that it's very, very minimal performance, very, very minimal function, this might be really an issue for Paul to, to handle.
I think it is, because he did touch, I mean, he did do, he did a separate, in your package, in this, separate to his report, he did an analysis of our design, and found even the original one as having no impact on the wetlands. And he, I mean, I think that it's not an exact science, he found the mitigation plantings that we proposed, perhaps out of sequence, but that's the first I've heard, I've only been encouraged to do more by the members of the board, but be that as it may, he found only positives from the design. And we did, we hired him not just to measure the wetlands, but because he had a familiarity with this board and wetlands all his entire life, I really did want his expertise, I wasn't just doing a sign off.
That's great, that's great, so we'll hear, you guys will sort this out.
And we're not talking about a legal analysis, we're talking about Mr. Janik's analysis of it.
Oh, no, I understand.
But you're always welcome to come.
But there's another important element, you've heard Bob chime in with a couple of issues here, that those have got to get resolved too, in terms of whatever the county overlay is here, whatever the measurements are that, that, and the soils, and the deep holes, and these sorts of things, let's do it at one time, so we don't, you know, make this, you know, a two-year project, and get it done.
I've taken some notes on the questions you asked, and we'll try to get, get responses in advance in writing, so that you can look at them and have your staff look at them.
But how does it work? At the same time, do the, do, do we get any kind of response on the, on some of the legal points? And are Steve's reading of them?
We'll get that at the end from.
Is that comes at the end? Okay. I just didn't, was curious how that.
I, I won't be issuing any response to Steve's letter.
Oh, okay.
From a legal perspective. So I, I serve as counsel to the board, so if the board needs advice in how to process this application, I'll provide the board with advice, but I won't be responding.
I see.
In the same way that staff responds to the submission.
So, is the next step to schedule a hearing?
No, the next step will be to get this information in.
Advice, submission.
Right, and Sabrina, help us with the submission dates and whatever.
October 14th for the November 6th. We went over those dates this morning.
Yeah, the, the problem I have is that your two meetings in November, I'm going to be away.
You do it in December, you can submit for December.
Okay, so what would be the date to, and that'll also give us a little more time to get it to, and hopefully in, in advance, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Can you shoot us an email and just let us know what the?
I think it's December 6th and.
No, but also the submission.
Submission deadlines for those December files. Yeah, I, I will send them to, but I think it's important for you to understand the level of detail that the board needs in order to move forward with processing the application.
I mean, is there?
If we have questions, as we try to process that information, is it hard to think of them now? If we have questions as we do these studies.
Can we reach out to you if we have?
Yeah, absolutely.
And probably Dennis.
And to Dennis, okay.
And Dennis.
Well, maybe we'll have Mr. Janik talk to you, if that would be okay, to just make sure that he's going to cover what you're concerned about.
Sure. We don't talk, you know, we're a pretty small group, so we're more than happy to speak with each other, as.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because I'm not.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, hang on a second. Because I have a couple of comments.
Oh, sure.
So, I, this is parenthetical, but this cryptomeria.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's fine to say, well, gee, you know, it's, it's a tree, we like it, and it's one tree, but it's a problem, but these things tend to reproduce, and that's a problem with these species that are non-native. I don't know whether this one is classified as being an invasive species, but I guess it's a non-native one.
No, and as I said, for the purposes of, like, that's a good example, you brought that up, like, the whole mix and match thing, like, I wasn't picking on trees when I made the statements in my memo, I was saying, if you're doing a functional analysis of wetlands, and we're going to pick a specimen tree, however you want to define specimen, outside of what we regulate as the wetlands buffer, then I don't know how that comes into play with respect to the analysis of the wetlands, I mean, and how it even comes into play for the alternatives analysis with respect to impacts of the wetlands, so that's how I meant it.
And the other, this is just a, parenthetically, I guess, because this is up to the homeowner, but, I mean, I like trees, and I've got lots of Norway maples, and if you got rid of all the Norway maples, there'd be no trees in my neighborhood, so I'm kind of sympathetic to that.
That is considered an invasive, as it is, but it still provides a function.
I know, that's why I mentioned it.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, so, now, I'm.
Yeah, but I have, when you're ready.
My, my, my concern about the tree where it is, is it, it looks to me like it's, it's really a problem for that, for the building itself, I mean, with those branches up against the roof, looks like they're against the roof, the siding, you know, that probably you just, homeowner may want to think, is this a fast-growing species, these cryptomeria? Do you know?
I, I do not, honestly.
It looks like they may want to clear, clean that up.
Tell me when you're ready, yeah. It's a medium-growth tree, it can be, it's, it's at a fairly mature size, it can be readily maintained by pruning. It's just one, as I said before, it's just one of many, as you deal with individual It's just one, as I said before, it's just one of many, um, as you deal with individual residential homeowners, people have their likes and dislikes. But where, where I do think that our, that our, um, that our conversation though, does for me intersect with some of these legal terms, is that I go back to the functionality of the space and what we see as architects for the arrangement of the elements within it, which we do feel strongly about, just as an architect who's designing a building addition has reasons for putting things. So I just want, but that, that works with the tree. That's all I was saying.
I don't, okay, that's your opinion, it works with the tree. You know, I don't see that. I'm an architect, so I understand the argument you're making. And design is, I mean, there, there are aspects of functional design which actually make a project work and, and there are other aspects that are just a matter of desire, what people would like.
No, you're right. You're absolutely, I'm just, I'm not, I'm agreeing.
You just have to, just, just.
I'm sorry.
Let me finish because none of this is going to make a difference right now. It's just for you to sort of understand where somebody's coming from here on the board. I don't, I don't buy into the notion that this is the only way to, to arrange this pool on the site. You have the idea that on the axis of the swimming pool, you don't want to see the edge of the garage and you don't want to see the driveway in the other direction. That in itself, for me, is not enough of a reason for us to say, okay, the pool has to be oriented in this direction. Your suggestion that the pool, um, that the, that the pool constructed close to the garage is going to impact the foundation, I'm, from the material I'm seeing, the, the foundation of the, the depth of the pool, the shallow end is what, three feet probably?
Three to four probably.
Right, somewhere in there. The bottom of the foundation of that garage, unless I'm mistaken, is between probably forty-two and forty-eight inches. So by the time you even do the excavation on the shallow end of the pool, you're not going to be impacting. And, and, no, I, here's something else you should know. In college, I actually dug swimming pools for a summer job and I ran a backhoe and I also dug a couple with a, a, by shovel because we couldn't get the backhoe back there with a, with a jackhammer. And so I understand how these things, I, I do. I understand how these things are built and I understand, I think partially to Dick's point, soils is a consideration here because once you dig a hole, unless you're going to commit to putting in some, um, some, some sort of, uh, sheeting to protect, right, to hold up the earth, the nature of the soil gives you the angle of repose and how far away you have to be in order to dig your hole. So it's, I just want to let you know that, that a lot of the arguments you're making here are not really, they're not resonating with me because first of all, it's not, some of your declarations are not backed up by the facts, which I think need to be demonstrated if you're going to make this argument. And other, others are just a client preference. And I'm not suggesting the client preference doesn't go into our consideration here. It absolutely does, but it is not the defining criteria for this board.
Again, thank you for all your time. Appreciate it.
I just have one question.
Oh, sorry.
Is a non-native tree invasive?
Not necessarily.
Okay. So you can have a non-native tree that can still work in an environment and not cause harm? Is that possible?
Well, uh, our code says yes, if you look at the tree code. And I, I had this discussion today with a resident and I've discussed it all along. So let's take the country Norway, Norway maple, absolutely, right? They pop up everywhere, but yet on our appendix A of recommended trees, we include Norway spruce. And, you know, honestly, I don't really see a bunch of little Norway spruce, you know, seedlings and saplings popping up everywhere, but it is, happens to be from the same country. So there is sort of the devil in the details there. I, I agree. So, and, um, you know, as far as, again, just commenting on that tree, it was the fact that I was just looking at, you know, just sort of wetlands function issue, not, you know, picking on the individual tree for sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll hear back from you in terms of dates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Very good, thank you.
Try to get you, the answers to all your questions.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we move now to our, our next item. This is a resolution. This is for the resolution, uh, the Berdoff Becker Burack Durst application for a subdivision amendment, for a lot line amendment, clearing, grading limit line amendment, steep slope permit, wetlands permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals. Uh, this is at twenty-four and twelve, trails and.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I provided you all on the day as a track change version of the resolution. You have the original resolution behind that, just for your information. I'm sure the applicant will speak to the changes if they.
Right, I hope the applicant will speak to this, to the substantive changes.
Yes.
Uh, can I just make an observation and a question here? That came through in my mailbox, I think it was sometime this afternoon, the track changes. And I, I just, I'm having a problem with us being asked to deal with these legal documents at the very last minute. We have a process here which is set, we set it, I guess, I, I imagine parts of it are set by state law and there are others who are experts in that. But I think our process is in a couple of weeks, you need to submit material in order for staff to process it and then give recommendations to the board at times so that the board can review these things. So I'd just like to ask, why are we addressing this tonight when we are getting new material, which is a legal document that we're being asked to review and either approve or disapprove? And a, a disapproval at this point is as important to the client to know that and have reasons for that as an approval is important to the client. So I'm having trouble with the way in which these things are slipping in our schedules so that we don't get things until the very last minute. I, since Friday, this is ninety-two pages that I had to download from my computer for tonight's meeting. Ninety-two pages. Now, I, maybe this is a matter for executive session because this is a, I think it's a, I think it's a problem maybe in the way in which we're doing business here and our relationships with the clients. There may be problems with staff resources and we can't, can't get things done in time because we have so much work to do. But on this particular subject, I'd like to ask the board and ask staff and council whether it's appropriate for us to be reviewing this material tonight, just as a, as a matter of principle alone.
So I'll, I'll start by addressing, um, a little bit of the process. So the resolution was finalized in draft form on Friday and should have been submitted to the board. If it, if it wasn't, that was a glitch in, in, at the staff level. Um, I don't know when you actually received the resolution, but it was finalized on Friday in accordance with the, the board's procedures. These comments that you received today are comments specifically from the applicant's counsel in reviewing the draft that was, that was available on Friday. And these are requests from the applicant for changes to the resolution that was prepared last week. So that, that's with respect to the resolution. With respect to the, the rest of the material, I, I can't speak to that.
No, I understand what you just said. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I did get the resolution, the draft resolution on Friday and I think that that's a seventeen-page, no, it's not. I think it's an eleven-page document. But I got it on Friday and I got it digitally. And I also got, by the time of this meeting, I got like ninety other pages of stuff, right, to review for tonight. So I don't think you're getting my point about, maybe you are, but my point about the burden that's being put on this board by a process which maybe we can fix if we address it. But, but this is, I mean, we're legally constituted to do business here for the state and for the town. And we have an obligation to do it as, as diligently as we can. And it seems to me that we're being burdened by these, this situation, which I don't completely understand and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but sooner or later, we have to figure out how to solve this problem.
I agree.
Thank you.
I don't know that that's necessarily an issue for, for this particular application.
No.
So we can talk maybe, um, in executive session, in advice of council session after the meeting if you want to talk further. But I have reviewed, I'll tell you, I've reviewed the, the comments that were submitted by the applicant today on the resolution and I have no objection to any of the comments from a legal perspective.
That's fine. And I agree that further discussion, it probably should be in executive session and that's up to the, to the board to decide, you know, how or if we want to pursue that. But to say that it's not a matter for this particular application, it is a matter for this app, particular application because we're getting this material at the last, at the last minute.
If I, if I may interject here for a moment because I, in the process with this particular application, the draft resolution was submitted to the board and the applicant on Friday. The applicant had questions and we felt it would be more clear and help you understand more readily if the applicant commented via a track change device for you to review the comments. Otherwise, the applicant would have stood here tonight, as I imagine she will do, and she will go through all of those changes. Um, you know, that is the way that the board has reviewed the resolutions when the applicant, applicant has had an opportunity to review it before the discussion.
And we've had that before because we had that with.
I know that history, yes, I know. We, but I, I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe we need to sort of stop doing business this way.
Well, I, I think.
And I'm sorry, just one more thing.
Go ahead, sure.
If the applicant has comments, right, and the applicant does and is perfectly reasonable, it's your right and I, I think it's, it's good to know so that we, so we get this right, right? But I also think that before we decide on trying to put together the proper, uh, resolution based on your comments and staff work, maybe there's no, there's no demand, there's no urgency to do this tonight, other than a self-imposed one. I mean, why do we necessarily, we, we can hear your comments, but there's no need necessarily for us to, to, uh, vote on the application tonight till we have more time to review it.
Can I be heard on that?
Of course.
Um, we actually got this Monday. It had not gotten to us on Friday. And this matter was last on your agenda July second. So we had hoped to be on an agenda in September and we weren't able to be on that agenda, so we got put over to this agenda. We, there, there is a, a time imperative for us, if you, if I can just remind you. So we have two lot line adjustments. Um, one is under a contract to acquire some of the, the Durst property. We have a time commitment to complete that process, which we are starting to butt up against. And it's not a matter of just you approve and we're done and we've met our contingent so we need to be able to get the amended Platts processed through the health department and signed and filed in order to meet that deadline. So it, it's important to us to be able to have action, or at least have your board and hopefully have, have your board consider our comments and have action tonight, if that's possible. I would really ask you to do that. We have been put over a number of times from different agendas and it's taken longer than we anticipated. We tried to get you the comments back quickly. I think most of them are matters of clarification, making sure the dates are accurate, more clerical and substantive. I think there are only a few substantive items that we wanted to raise with the board that, that we hope the board would consider so that we can move along the process on the Platts more expeditiously and be able to start work on the wetland mitigation a little bit earlier than otherwise we might be able to the way that the, or the resolution was structured. I understand how difficult it is. You work full-time and all of a sudden your inbox starts getting inundated with these comments. I, I understand that. I would just hope that you would treat us a little differently tonight and please consider this resolution. And, and maybe going forward, if I can offer any suggestions, you know, resolutions would be done several weeks in advance so that they could go through that vetting process and, and reviewed. And we appreciate that you, that you let us see the resolution and that you do discuss it with us because there, there are considerations that you might not, or staff might not be aware of that are important to us, that we want to make it right.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Any other thoughts? I think we should take it up later on though, so this will, after, I think we should take it up later on after, after the meeting if we have time. No, no, just our thoughts. Your discussion, I'm sorry. So in any event, we have, um, we have a draft resolution and if you could run through the substantive issues, I mean, the punctuation, the correction of the staten, the number, et cetera.
Yeah, they don't have anything until page six.
Well, to Tom's point, print these and sometimes they come in on the eight by eleven. You guys will sit here and say it's on X page and I have, it's a different page. And then this weekend's, uh, thing was it just cut it off on a certain line. So that was, I don't know what was going on with my printer, but again, to Tom's point, uh, we need to get a better system. Anyway.
Okay. So, um, we, we are proposing, uh, first change is to eliminate condition number four. That's listed on page six and the eight by, eight and a half by fourteen page, the legal page, it starts at line forty-seven. And basically this is a requirement that we submit a five-year wetland monitoring and maintenance plan and a cost estimate. And we're just asking that that be deleted because it was already taken care of. It was submitted. It was reviewed by Mr. Coleman, who you asked to stay on to review this application, even though he left, and he indicated that it was acceptable to him.
What was acceptable? Maintenance?
Both of, both the five-year monitoring and maintenance program and the budget that he included.
So what are you asking for relief from? I don't understand.
I'm asking that the condition eliminated because it's already been taken care of.
Oh. Well, we, we usually commemorate these things anyway, even though they've been done, we still have this so that we can make sure that the maintenance, there's something that we tie to the document, future maintenance checking.
Just my personal opinion on it, I know it's been done. I haven't seen it. Stephen usually discusses all these numbers with me. I didn't hear anything from, I'm not saying he didn't do it, but I got to look at these numbers too in conjunction with it. You like to keep them in just as a placeholder.
Exactly.
Take it out now, you could overlook it sometimes, that's all I'm saying.
What's the objection to having it in there if it's sort of?
Just, just why, the reason I raised it was, was the comment in there because you thought it was inadequate or because it wasn't done? Because there are comments in here where we have already taken care of the items? And, and as an applicant, we, we say to ourselves, well, is that because it was not seen that we did it or is it because what we did wasn't deemed acceptable? Because once we leave here, then we need to confirm that we actually met all of the conditions and that creates some ambiguity.
I'd like to see for clarification on that point, or do you actually want to remove the language?
Well, I was looking to have it removed because it had been taken care of, but if, it's just a matter to, to check off.
I have a question I'd rather leave in because I got to check all this and I usually go over with Stephen quite closely and I haven't seen anything.
Well, he issued a, a review memo on September twenty-sixth and he covered all of this and these.
Customer leave, leave this language in on five-year maintenance and ten-year maintenance programs so that staff has, it's, it's again, a placeholder, it's a reminder.
Check off on it.
Exactly. So when someone seven years down the road is looking at a ten-year maintenance plan and someone says, well, why are you making me do this? Well, wait a second, it was a condition. It's built into the resolution.
I agree that totally, particularly since the comment refers to a Barrett document, which may or may not be around.
Well, it was submitted. I, I mean, we made the submission in time for the September seventeenth meeting. This has been in your.
If I, if I could just address the issue, there are countless times on almost every resolution that this board passes, there are conditions in there that have actually already been satisfied. But again, we keep them in there as placeholders, as sort of record-keeping purposes. If it's been submitted and it's been reviewed by Steve, as you said, and signed off on by Steve, then that's sort of no harm, no foul. It'll, it'll be checked off. Bob is saying that, that he has not had a chance to confer, to, um, confer with Steve to make sure, to verify that, that it is acceptable to Steve. My recommendation based on the discussion here tonight is to keep it in and it's going to be, it sounds like a very easy condition to quickly check off.
Yeah, it seems to me memorializes the decisions that have been made on the project as we move forward.
Correct.
That's fine, as long as it was just a matter of not knowing if there was an issue with what we submitted, or it just hadn't been seen.
We're not smart enough to throw curass at you.
It was recognized, it has been, we recognize that it's been submitted.
Fine, okay.
We just have it too.
Right.
Okay, well, it was part of our August 26 submission, so it's been here for a while. Next condition.
Yep.
It's relocation of an existing sixty-foot chain-link fence, so as not to encroach. We're asking that this be removed, and deferred to a later date, but let me explain it. We have modified our plans to indicate that that sixty-foot chain-link fence will be relocated. This is one that is between Burek and the Berdoff property, and Bob wanted it to be moved to the new boundary line, so that there wouldn't be any overlap. So we have added that note on the plan. We don't want to have to do that relocation until after we file the Platte. So what I'm proposing to say is that we will present, prior to getting a certificate of occupancy, or as a condition of getting a certificate of occupancy, we will present an update of the survey that shows that that fence has been relocated.
By a land survey.
Yes, yes.
I have no problem.
That's all I'm looking to do with that, it's just a matter of timing. Number, I can't tell if it's seven or eight. These drawings, all but SU1, had already been updated with all of this information, so that was why, again, I was asking that that be deleted, because it had been taken care of, and I didn't want to have confusion over whether or not it had been dealt with. This is showing the clearing and grading limit line changes on lots five and six. Lots five and six are Burek property. SU1 doesn't cover the Burek property, so that's why I didn't think it was appropriate for that change to be reflected on SU1. That was the reason for that requested change.
Well, generally, not to hold this thing up here, but before you file that with the county, let me take a look at the amended subject and amendment, because I looked at it quickly tonight on the PES, and I just have a few lines of comments. We're taking the, after the resolution, so just so you don't know.
Okay, and I understand the point of this, that you wanted to make sure that all of these plans were, that show lots five and six were consistent and had the same information. The only one that doesn't show five and six is SU1, so that was why.
So is this another placeholder for you, Bob?
They actually did all those, so I think that's fine. You can take that.
Okay.
But I'm just recommending that you submit the document.
Yes, I hear you.
Let me take a look at the document.
Mm-hmm.
That one's fine.
And the rest of them, number nine, we just want to be able to submit that in AutoPad. That would be the amended final Platts. I don't, our surveyor doesn't use the system of RGIS.
Yeah.
And the new condition fourteen is what I've already described to you, updating that survey to show the relocation of the sixty-foot chain-link fence and the new clearing and grading limit line on the subject property. So we will provide that as a condition of, or prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy.
Might I mention they would be surveyed located?
Yes, SU-
We had a similar issue on another amended clearing and grading, we could actually put in there, have it surveyed located by the PLS, as opposed to just going, someone going up there and taking the other ones. That's one recommendation I could do.
Yes, SU1 is a survey, so Sabrina and I assume will make that change. And the last change that we've asked for is a new, be it further resolved, paragraph on page eight. And this is a request that with the prior consent of the environmental coordinator, we'd like to be able to start invasive species removal at the appropriate time this year. And if there's a situation where the bond has, the maintenance and monitoring bond, which is, you know, post-mitigation application, if it isn't posted yet, I just didn't want there to be any confusion about our ability to be able to start that invasive species removal work. And I talked to Sabrina about it, and she suggested that we raise it with the board.
So when will the bond be posted?
Well, I'm assuming the bond will be posted before the end of the year, but there's a special time of year that you want to do the invasive species removal, and I want to make sure that if it's October, November, and we haven't had the bond approved by the town board and accepted, I didn't want to get stuck with a scheduling problem.
And fall behind.
Right. And because it relates to, you know, post-mitigation work, it seemed to be appropriate that it, I don't think you're giving anything up by allowing us to do it at that point in time, but again, I didn't want any confusion created.
If I may, I just had one comment on paragraph sixteen. Steve Coleman's memo that was issued last week mentioned a fifteen percent contingency in the cost estimate for the maintenance bond. So I think that that fifteen percent contingency should be added to that paragraph sixteen, when we're talking about the thirty-five percent cost of the total plantings, installation of materials. I think we should reference that fifteen percent contingency there.
I have one question on LLP dash one.
Okay, would you like us to bring it up?
If you can, sure.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, that monastery looks kind of, bricks held up well, but it's sort of like that one in France.
It's written right there.
LLP dash one.
It won't be finished.
There you go, that's the one, okay? Is this stream that's identified, is this a stream that flows year-round, or is it intermittent?
Stream.
It's on the Berdoff property, I think.
When leaving the Durst wetland?
Yeah, well, it's, you have a wetland identified in the middle of the plot, which is...
Can we?
Right there, the circles.
Yeah, that's a wetland. This is labeled as a stream. Is it an intermittent stream?
Yes.
Or continuous?
Yes, it's intermittent. When I was there, there was some water in the middle of it, but there was no flow into the bigger wetland.
Okay, Dennis, that's okay, right? If it's intermittent?
I'm sorry, okay, as far as-
Relative to it not having a wetland associated with the stream course?
Well, I, if they don't have anything else, Matt, if you're just telling me that that represents the limit of what I see, then what is it, just an isolated intermittent ditch, or?
There's a pocket here, and then there's an outlet that runs down to the larger wetland, but regardless, even if there was a setback to that, the larger setback to the wetland, it would all encompass it, it would all be part of it.
But it's not labeled that way, right? It was encompassed, but I don't see the labeling for the bigger wetland, where is that? Is that the edge of the stream?
It's right down in this area here.
So, I think Bob, as they police up things, I think that has to be policed up too, as to what is this? This is identified as a wetland.
That's the wetland buffer to the pocket wetland, so the stream comes out of the middle of that, on the lower part right there, so if you put a buffer, if you put a buffer on that stream, it's, because we take the buffer from the farthest point out from the wetland, that the stream coming out of the middle is closer, so the buffer to that is even closer in. So this is a conservative buffer that would encompass that water course as well.
Which is this line here?
That's the buffer.
Okay, if that's the buffer, then this is a wetland identified here, and this is the buffer. But this is also a wetland, if it's a continuous stream.
That's right, that's the buffer. That's the buffer to the other wetland.
But it's labeled as a stream, but, you know, so-
Well, I'm not sure how it's labeled, but that is, that's the buffer.
It says existing stream.
It says existing stream.
Okay, well-
So that has to be clarified.
It should be clarified.
That's all.
Okay, we can clarify.
And honestly, I'm sorry, I've only seen this, I haven't visited the site, I don't have an aerial in front of me, but, you know, if you start having wetlands and streams, and they start, have buffers starting to overlap and whatnot, well, it's kind of all just the same system, like to start segmenting it, you know, from just sort of that ecological perspective.
That's okay.
Okay.
I agree with that, it's just a question, this isn't labeled, right?
I knew where you were going, I thought, okay, just want to make sure.
In my opinion.
I had a question on page five, line six. What do we mean by select invasive species? What does select mean? And how is that defined?
In this particular case, I would assume those are the target species that we're going after, principally the fragmites and the multiflora rose. There are other invasive species there, but not to the extent of what we call the target species that are really taking over the wetland, it's the multiflora rose and the fragmites.
So the select really doesn't help us at all? Are we just really taking care of all invasive species there? Is that really part of the, is that really the maintenance plan?
Yeah, I think as they're encountered, you know, if there's some bittersweet in there, that'll be pulled out as well, when that's being done.
So I just didn't recall ever earmarking which ones and documenting those, so I think it should be basically removal of invasive plant species, not just select whatever that means.
And there is a paragraph in my report that talks about what's out there.
Right.
It's the whole host of the usual things.
Yeah, that's what we always see, yeah. So I would recommend taking the word select out, at least, it doesn't add anything to my...
Page five.
Page five, line six.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it, my message. Okay, we don't have an objection to that, so.
And then the planting mitigation maintenance plan is, are we calling that an invasive mitigation plan, or a maintenance plan? Should we spell that out? Or, I, no, that's up to you guys, I mean.
We had called our sheet one of three, the plant removal and monumentation plan, and I think sheet two, we called it the wetland mitigation plan. So one is more of a removals plan, and one is more of a planting restoration plan.
Somewhere, I think it was on this application, there was a reference, and I recall this as being part of the application, and some sort of extension of the pool house, something going on at the pool house?
Can I borrow that?
And I can't find it out, because again, I'm looking at versions.
No, it's a description of the manner in which the clearing and grading limit line may have been exceeded or offended. So there is, oh, can we put?
But there's nothing going on here in terms of new activity with regard to the building. It was very confusing to me, and I thought, I don't recall that.
No, there is a porch that cantilevers, on the back of the cabana, that cantilevers over the clearing and grading limit line, it breaks the plane, and the town's position is that that is an encroachment into the clearing and grading limit line. So the section you're talking about was a section that just described what improvements are currently offending the clearing and grading limit line and requiring an amendment of it. No activity, no construction is happening here. The only action taking place here is action to implement the wetland mitigation approval.
Okay, fair enough.
So it's just, it's just on this little section right here.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions, thoughts, changes on the resolution?
On that point, Bob?
Which one?
Your point about the improvements. We can just add the word existing improvements, just to make that a little bit more clear, they're not proposed as part of this application.
Right. Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended this evening?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay, so three, one.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you considering it.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, we move now to our next resolution. This is the resolution for the Oliveri residence. This was for the apartment. I think we went through this pretty quickly last time, but I guess the only issue is the downstairs basement, you've got the language in here where they've got to use the utility room and reconfigure it, so that we don't have any issues in terms of size and the ratio.
And we don't, a lot of stuff could take care of the building apartment.
Right, Tom will have to take care of that.
Yeah, so on the size issue, the way the resolution is drafted, it's because there was no further information provided by the applicant on that utility space, and how it's allocated, whether it's allocated for the main dwelling or the apartment. The way this is drafted is, the planning board is allowing the accessory apartment to exceed the size requirements in the code, which you have authority to do, but there's a condition in here that says notwithstanding your approval to allow the apartment to exceed the size by two hundred and fifty-nine square feet, the applicant nonetheless shall make a good faith effort to the satisfaction of the building inspector to reduce the floor area of the accessory apartment, so that it is in conformance.
Right.
And that's located on page three or four of the resolution.
Right. Excuse me. And Bobby, you have the condition about the sightlines, where he's going out to look.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts, changes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain. The next item is a request for an extension of approval for the Newcastle Fire Department, Station Number One Fire Station and related facilities at 491-495 King Street, Chappaqua, New York. Any issues on this, problems, okay? If not, is there a motion to grant the requested extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We now have a referral from the zoning board, and this is on the Temple Bethel of Northern Westchester at 220 South Bedford Road. This is the amendment to a special use permit application for new signage. So this was something that has been referred to us. You did not have this information on Friday. Sabrina actually chatted with me on this and thought, what do you think? We have a relatively light agenda, and in order to keep October 15th clear, where we don't have a meeting, we thought we might want to take this up and look at this. So we just got this information here, so perhaps the applicant can help us. It looks like they're prepared with pictures on the board, which is great.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rich Cordone with JMC. We are the design engineers for Temple Bethel. They came before us, discussed with us that they're having a little bit of problems with security on the site. There are a number of people that are visiting the site. It is currently operating as a nursery school and a synagogue, obviously. There have been a lot of people that have been mistaking the address. I guess GPS is bringing a lot of people there, the way that the GPSs are these days, and they have people trying to get into the building that don't belong in the building. And when you have a nursery school, that's a huge thing with security. So they're trying to get, make sure that everybody knows that comes to the site, that this is indeed the Temple Bethel site, and not Town Hall, a courtroom, or something else, because apparently that seems to be one of the locations that the GPS is bringing them to.
Wow.
Yeah, right?
And the current sign is insufficient?
The current sign is fairly insufficient, it's pretty small, you can see, there's, you can see it up there, they have one. It's very hard to read, coming from this direction. This is looking south on South Bedford Road.
Right.
It's very difficult to decipher.
It's so hard to read, could you point it out to me?
You can't even see it going north.
It's the white one.
Yeah, it's over here, and there's no sign at all going north.
Nothing, right.
No, so you can't, so you have to be a member for like, three years before you know that.
So where's this existing red sign on the cover sheet?
That existing red sign is actually in that location. I believe that the red sign, this was placed over the red sign. The red sign was in disrepair, so that's just a temporary sign that was placed.
Gotcha.
You can see, this is the location looking from going north, and there's no sign at all there. So what we have is, we have difficulties with people finding the site if they're coming on from Bedford, South Bedford Road and going in a northerly direction. This is a view looking down the site driveway, where we're actually proposing to do the third sign there, it's sign number three, and that sign is going to be a ways back. We'll get into the details a little bit.
Well into the property.
Well into the property. You can see over here, I'll point it out like there-
Would you like your pointer?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, save me a little.
There's some walking.
Listen, not for nothing, I've been sitting there.
Then you don't get any exercise.
Exactly, I've been sitting there for a while. This right over here, we're proposing a third sign here. So the first sign is going to be down over here, and that's going to be visible from travel, for-
Southbound.
Southbound. We're going to have another sign over here that's going to be visible for northbound, and then we're going to have a directional sign over here, and what that's going to do, is that's going to tell the people visiting the site where to travel for parking, because currently, as it exists on the site, you can see over here, we have a one-way in this way, and a one-way out going this way. So what happens is, since there's no sign there, there's not sufficient signage, you have people that are driving past this, trying to make the right down the one-way over here. So to alleviate that, we're proposing to add a new sign that's over here, and what that'll do is, that'll direct the visitors to the parking area down the correct way on the one-way road.
Why don't you just say all traffic, one direction, instead of just parking, so people don't drop, try to drop people off? That'd be a stronger statement, too.
Okay, I'll discuss that.
Move parking, all traffic.
Yeah, all traffic, that's right.
I'd be happy to discuss it with the temple.
We don't usually get involved with content of signs, but I think that one's probably not a constitutional issue.
Yeah, because somebody may say, "Oh, I'm not going there to park," so they will go that direction.
That's a good point, yes.
Yeah, they go drop someone off and pick someone up, so you can stop.
No, that's a very good point, I'll discuss that, I'll discuss that with my client and see what they think. But pretty much that, this is our application, we have three signs that are, there's a need that's been demonstrated for them. So I guess what we're looking for tonight, what exactly are we looking for?
They have a referral, they have been referred your application for the zoning board. The zoning board will be looking for a referral memo from the board- The zoning board will be looking for a referral memo from the board regarding your, any comments you may or may not have regarding their application.
Right.
I have a question for the applicant. Are these illuminated in any way, these signs?
Okay, they are illuminated. What we are proposing is we're proposing a small ground light that's going to be facing up, and it's just, they're not, it's not backlit, it's not going to be, they're not going to be signs that look, um, the desire here is not to have something that looks like a.
Commercial.
Commercial. We're trying to maintain the residential look. However, unfortunately, you know, right now you have the high holy days that are going right now, and it's, you know, it gets dark. So in order for somebody to find the place, you're going to need to be.
Will those lights be on, uh, all night?
Um, I'll get back to you guys on that. I don't see a reason for them to be on all night. We should, I'm almost positive we'll be able to have them on some type of a timer so that they can shut off after the functions are over.
Unless there's some sort of safety issue that you need them on.
I don't see a reason, I don't see a reason why not.
An hour after an event ends, maybe?
Yeah, just enough, you know, that way in case somebody, to fix somebody up.
It's residential in the area.
Absolutely, agreed.
Good points.
We are in receipt of Mr. Seoli and Ms., Ms., Sabrina's memo.
Ms. Sabrina.
Ms. Sabrina.
So southern.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Where are we going, boy?
That's okay.
Texas?
North Town.
Explains why.
I didn't know they were that civilized up there.
Explains your ability to, explains your ability and comfort with the, the microphone. Obviously, do a lot of karaoke.
That's a good one. That's the first I heard of that. We are in receipt of their memos.
Yes.
Um, there's nothing in those memos, I feel, as though we're, we're not going to be able to address.
I think the major issue is really sightlines, right? Right, Bob? Traffic sightlines?
Now, Bob, as, while we're here, you're concerned with the sightline coming out of this driveway? For the sign blocking over here?
Yes, because it's not controlled by a stop sign.
Gotcha.
So it's not controlled by a stop sign. The side triangle is much bigger.
Okay.
It's going to be obstructed by the sign.
I just wanted to make sure we're on.
I recommend maybe possibly a stop bar to do the trick.
Okay.
Kind of stop sign.
Got it. I'll discuss it with the client.
Do we have, um, do we have height limitations?
For what?
Yes.
For a sign. So I mean, if you put up with the trees or something.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it wouldn't block traffic, but you could also have.
There's a whole laundry list of items that have to be.
I thought so.
Yeah.
I should have known better.
The current sign is at dead ground level.
Do we? Yes.
And it's heavily wooded.
Yeah, I know it is, yeah.
So I have a question about the lighting for a second here. The color temperature, you have it three thousand Kelvin. Um, and there's some question about whether we'd prefer something somewhat less than that. The other thing that I don't know, maybe you can help me with, is the lumens you have at twenty-four hundred. And so I guess I'd ask, what is, 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 is that the appropriate amount of light for a size, a sign this size? Is that, is that too much light? Is it not enough light? Is there a way to sort of figure out whether this is appropriate, because as Bob says, it's a residential neighborhood? So had this one really brightly lit, it's probably not necessary even at night, just enough so that.
Just enough, yeah, you want a warm, I understand the, we want a warm glow that's going to be something that's not going to, I agree, we want something.
We don't want to feel like it's a commercial sign.
We want a nice soothing light. We don't want a huge bright, bright spotlight. We're going to look into that. And I understand what you're looking for here, I believe. I think we're on the same page. We're looking for something that's more of a, a warmer light, something that's not necessarily as bright.
We normally don't.
Like twenty-five hundred.
You have twenty-five hundred, there's twenty-seven, twenty-seven tops, right?
I think, I think, okay, so what we're going to do is, we'll scale those back. We'll scale those back.
Well, I don't know about the lumens. Maybe you don't need to scale it back. I just don't know what that means in this particular case.
So, so if I may, the applicant's aware, what's going to happen is, um, the board is going to generate a memo noting the concerns, and particularly, um, the timing of the lighting with a recommendation for no longer than one hour after the, the end of an event, and, um, commenting on the light and making sure that the light is scaled to the residential neighborhood as well as not exceeding twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven hundred kiln, Kelvin, and also making sure that it is, um, consistent with a residential neighborhood. And then also that the applicant should continue to address staff comments as part of the zoning board's review.
Right.
So that memo will then be circulated back to the zoning board of appeals. You'll also get a comment of it, and then you would address your comments as per the zoning board application.
Great. I think that's, have we nailed it? Covered it pretty well?
Is there anything else?
I like it.
All right, everybody, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, would you like to see a draft of this memo before it is circulated?
Yes, yes, please, please.
And do you, does the entire board want to see it or just the chairman?
I don't need to see it.
I don't need to see it.
Okay, very good.
Everybody have a wonderful night.
Okay, thank you.
It's too late for that.
Exactly. We have to designate who says it.
This turn was it, I guess.
I was at a turn then, I'm sure. We have minutes.
You had some rough ones there.
We have some minutes for September seventeenth.
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
I have no comment.
Well, I had one comment, and I was, um, just seeing, huh, I don't know what page it will be, because mine got cut off short, but after the resolution, so we're finally forward to this. Anyway, it's just a repeat of, it says, "On motion by Chairman Kirkwood to adopt the resolution as amended so moved by Mr. Curley." I know I get to the point where I need a lot of assistance, but I think it was just Tom who motion, uh, made the motion.
Hang on a minute.
Page five.
Page five. What line?
Sixteen. Sixteen, sixteen, yep.
By Chairman Kirkwood to adopt his amendment.
No, it was, I think it was, the motion was by Mr. Curley.
Ah.
My one attempt to grab the chairman's shit.
And who moved it?
You can have it.
Tom.
Tom did.
Seconded by Sheila.
And, and I had a question, and I just, it's in the resolution. What is a non-small wireless telecommunications facility? Is that defined?
Your town code now defines.